How is this sound, better?
It's better. Am I better too? I'm just looking for a re- uh, reinforcement.
Yes.
You're good.
Okay.
Well, everybody's shaking their head, yeah, so it must be better.
Alright, so I'll just go over, I guess, the changes additions to the agenda again. One would be an addition, item number twelve point five. Um, and that's a request to close, uh, a city parking lot, um, for a court drive. And then the other is just acknowledge that item number eight is not going to be an action item. That will be just a discussion communication item.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes.
I will second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? Roll call, Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Invocations from the Crosspoint Church. Good evening.
Good evening, Gary. Alright, do you guys prefer I just keep the mask on? It's up to me. Okay, I don't know if it's...
Probably easier what the...
Yeah, I was gonna say, easier for you to hear me, probably, so. I just wanna say thank you to, first of all, just to our, our city council and to our, uh, other leaders here. Uh, we just appreciate the time that you put in, uh, for us, um, just on behalf of Crosspoint. We are grateful, uh, to be a part of this community and the work that you guys do, so thank you so much. And I'll open up our time in prayer here. Heavenly Father and our Creator, Lord, uh, we pray that you would be gracious on our city, on our leaders, on us as a people. But I pray for wisdom and strength for all the city council members, Gary, Steve, Dave, Mary, and Chad, as they make decisions and provide leadership, uh, for the good of us, uh, as a people. And Lord, we pray that you would guide them today and each day in that process. Lord, we pray for a spirit of cooperation and generosity among all of us, that instead of creating divisions, we would be a model for other communities. On listening and caring for one another, this would carry across race, religion, and political positions. Lord, I pray for those who are struggling in our city. Lord, whether it be the poor right now and the challenges that exist for them. Lord, I pray for the homeless, that they would have homes. I pray for the business owners and their success. Lord, we pray for those who are isolated. Lord, that they would have community that they need and encouragement that they need. We pray for those who are sick, for their health. Lord, sustain and encourage these people. Lord, we pray for our educators right now, as they bear a great stress. Uh, and, uh, Lord, we pray that you would refresh them, that they would have strength each day, that they would be able to adapt and change, um, as necessary in order to educate, uh, our children. And we think, are just so thankful for their commitment to that and their diligent work for that, Lord, we are thankful. Lord, I pray for humility before you and a willingness to listen to you and your leadership. Lord, we pray that you would bless us and keep us always before you, make your face shine upon us, and give us peace for your glory and for your name, amen.
Thank you. Uh, next is the pledge of allegiance. Steve, you wanna do the honors again?
Be my pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognization of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? Alright, uh, actually, we have, uh, we presented a award to the Elks Club, and we have representatives here. And, uh, just like they ever come up and talk a little bit about their park and all the people that, uh, partnered and helped out with it, so. Tammy?
Hi, I'm Tammy Lane from Hutchinson. This is George Wayne, my husband. We have Catherine, Catherine Lebar.
Greg Hughes. Um, I'm representing Pat May, who is our president, and he couldn't be here. Um, I'm one of the officers, Tammy's also on the board of trustees, Catherine is our secretary, and Greg is also an officer. But I guess what we're here for is to thank the city, and especially Sarah, for putting in that time to apply for this award for us. We realize this, it's the city's park, and we're, we feel very privileged to be able to sponsor probably the best park in Hutch as far as we're concerned. We know it takes a lot of people to raise that money, not just the Elks, but private donors, grants, and even money from the city. And that's kinda why we wanted to come here and thank you people for giving us this award.
Catherine, we're fine, okay. Alright, well, on behalf of all the Elks in the state of Minnesota, especially here in Hutchinson, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, Mayor and Council, just obviously, we, uh, the council received an award for recognition of their partnership with the city in regards to, uh, oh. You're just gonna have to speak louder, okay? Sorry, out there. Sorry, um, the, we received an award from the, from, for the Elks, for our partnership. The other award they've received is for our master park plan and for the engagements, um, that we have with the public in regards to that master parks plan.
Alrighty, uh, citizens addressing the council, if anybody wants to address the council. Uh, ready, moving on, we have approval of minutes. We have, uh, regular meeting minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty, and the workshop minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty.
Make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave, both approve. Any other discussion? Roll call. Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. This will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of resolution number one-five-two-zero-eight. Resolution to sell at auction unclaimed property, and those were bicycles. Uh, B is approval of resolution number one-five-two-zero-nine. The resolution to sell at auction unclaimed property miscellaneous items at the police department. And C is resolution number one-five-two-one-zero. Resolution to appropriate unclaimed property for the police department use. And D is approval of change order number one, levy number three, project number twenty-dash-three. And that's the south central drainage area improvement phase two. E is approval of mosquito control contract with Park Environmental Mosquito Management Incorporated. F is approval of items for the two thousand twenty-one pavement management program levy number one, number twenty-one-dash-all-one. There's, uh, two resolutions underneath there. There's, uh, resolution number one-five-two-two-one. Resolution ordering preparation of report on improvements. And resolution number one-five-two-two-two. Resolution receiving re- reports and call-in hearing on improvement. Uh, G is approval of board appointments or reappointments. Dan, Dan Janison to the planning commission through March of two thousand twenty-five. Reappointment, reappointment of Tom Wertz to the planning commission through March of two thousand twenty-five. And Tim Worland to the H R A board through August of two thousand twenty-five. And H is plans appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, uh, E and F. Just had a couple of short questions.
Alrighty.
Make a motion to approve the balance.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the balance. Roll call, Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh, Steve, E?
Yeah, I guess, um, you know, on the board action form, it says sixty thousand dollars. But if you add up the base or the core contract and add in the extra seven optional spraying, it comes to fifty-two-seven, I believe, so. Just was curious about the difference.
Yeah, that, uh, we've been budgeting right around that sixty thousand. And there, uh, we had dropped it a few years ago and then increased it back up again in case we have other extra, um, fall applications. To date, we have not, we have not used, uh, we've only had one time where we've exceeded the thirteen in the last few years, and that was this fall. We had one additional, uh, one additional treatment, uh, mid-September.
So it just gives a little cushion there.
Right, um, the, the total, uh, increase roughly about, um, average is one point four percent if you use this year as a, as a, um, standard against the new pricing. So, yeah, about one point four percent increase.
Okay, thank you, John, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? Roll call, Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Yep, Steve?
Um, I was just wondering, um, if there's been any more discussion about possible ash tree removals? I brought that up a little while ago, and now, you know, there's talk about the forestry department, you know, looking at things and and wondering, you know, if there'll be discussions with the neighbors about that as the final plans get, uh, put together.
Yeah, uh, Donovan's been, uh, City Arborist has been provided our, our plans at this point. Actually, we, we're, we're cleaning up some other things, uh, from an engineering design, uh, standpoint. We look to get into the design of this project, probably in the next, uh, whole couple of weeks here. You know, in the full design mode on this front. And then, uh, engineering staff will consult with, with Donovan. Uh, it might be something, we're not gonna have a, uh, our typical neighborhood meeting, open house, prior to the public hearing that we're asking to be scheduled tonight for the November, uh, tenth council meeting. But we can actually, what we'll do, Steve, is we'll touch on trees and we'll just ask property owners if they have any input relative to the boulevard trees adjacent to their homes. And just gonna leave it at that and allow Donovan to make his recommendations. Uh, from a project standpoint, I don't believe we're gonna be impacting any trees, you know, from a grading. There's no sidewalk being installed or, or trail facilities, so, you know, we're, it's really gonna rely on Donovan's input and then anything we can get from the property owners.
Well, it just seems like from other projects that, you know, here was an opportunity with the street projects, since the streets are gonna be closed down, that, uh, we could, uh, do some removals in as part of the diversification program. And there's, I'm not talking about removing all of them. As I've said before, just to try to mix some in, especially in those spots where there might be higher concentrations, and there are a few places that are that way.
John can touch on, on that.
Sure, uh, council members and mayor, uh, Donovan and, and I both have worked through the, um, the roads that are going to be redone as part of the twenty-one project. And he's also doing evaluation, tree-by-tree evaluation, so that we have a, a better handle on what the condition of those various trees are. We're hoping that that work can coincide similar to what the engineering group's, uh, uh, design timetable is, as we're trying to finish up the last little bit of planting that we have, before it gets too, too, uh, late in the fall here, so. He's been working on that, like I said, uh, we've got it laid out and he's done some of the evaluations, but we just haven't finished. And then once we get finished, we'll be able to coordinate with, uh, with the engineering group to, to figure out actual trees that, uh, we would wanna take and replace, so.
Well, again, I know there's a few yards that have multiple ash trees, and one in particular is a corner lot that they've got five or six, I think, so.
And like my house used to be. I had five at one point. Three now, so.
Opportunity, yep. Thanks. And then Kent, I have one other thing, uh, just with sidewalks. Any, you know, there, any additional sidewalks being added, or like the one on Merrell, would that be extended further, or just, I just noticed sidewalks are mentioned in...
Yeah, well, like, we've taken a very preliminary look. Keith and I have had some discussions as we started to put together our, our base drives in essence and, uh, and look at street width, so, but, uh, yeah, at, at this point, yeah, that might be the only area in my mind, it's like you say, Steve, over on Merrell by the apartments. Uh, I don't envision one going east-west on, on Clinton at, at this point. You know, it's something we, we talked about, we, we looked at the street width, uh, what the street width would be. We're gonna match existing widths out there, and, uh, what the impacts would be sidewalk-wise, and, yeah. It, it, it basically resulted in some grade issues in the boulevard and then pre-impacts, obviously, so. But, yeah, we'll look, we'll look at the, the Merrell Street area down by the, uh, the apartments there.
Thanks, Ken.
Yep, thank you.
We'll all make a motion to approve, unless there's anything else.
I'll second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad. Any other discussion? Uh, uh, roll call, Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we don't have a public hearing, communication, request petitions, nothing, no unfinished business. We'll move on to, uh, entering into a phased agreement for the Third Avenue site former Senex fertilizer plant. Miles?
Come here, Council, I moved to my office so you can hear me a little better. And, uh, we're gonna attempt to do this in two different locations, so I'm gonna share my screen, and Miles, you're just gonna have to tell me when to, uh, to click, so. Alright, there we go. Alright, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, originally, we were gonna, uh, request approval for a purchase agreement between the city and a developer for the purchase of the, the Third Avenue Northwest redevelopment site. It used to be the old Senex fertilizer plant. The developer called me this afternoon, and then he kind of brought in some other areas that basically were not ready to go ahead with the purchase agreement. So I thought, we will just come in, we'll update you on what we know at this point, and then we'll come back at a future council meeting for consideration of the purchase agreement once we get everything ironed out. Matt, next slide. Hopefully, there we go. Okay, um, just a real quick summary, I guess, for the benefit of the council, and then if you have any questions that, uh, you wanna ask, I'll do my best to answer them. So basically, what's being talked about, uh, we're working with the developer, uh, to see if they're gonna purchase the Third Avenue Northwest lot that's currently owned by the city and the E D A. As you recall, this used to be the old Senex fertilizer plant. Uh, the purchase price that's been talked about is, um, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three twenty-nine. So it's really more the structure of that, I think, that we're trying to work out with the, with the developer. Uh, the developer has requested a purchase agreement from the city, and really, the purpose of that is, they just want some assurance from the city that they're gonna be first in line to purchase this lot while they're doing their due diligence work. They're gonna, they're gonna be spending thousands of dollars, um, getting their financial models put together and, uh, doing due diligence on the site itself and looking at the environmental aspects of it and so forth, and then going through the planning process. They just wanna make sure that they're not gonna spend that money and then lose out on the opportunity to actually purchase the lot. So that's why they're asking for the purchaser agreement. Um, next slide, Matt. Um, as I mentioned, um, this lot years ago, it used to be the Senex fertilizer plant. There was a house where the trees are now, kind of in the middle of the picture. And there was, used to be a rail line, uh, or rail right-of-way along the southern border of the lot. And then back in, I'm gonna say two thousand and six, the E D A and the city, we partnered to purchase this from Senex and get this all cleaned up and ready for redevelopment. So at the time, the E D A invested two hundred and one thousand, uh, from its downtown revolving loan fund, and then the city kicked in a hundred and fifty thousand from the community investment fund. So those two numbers together, that's what we're asking as the purchase price, a total of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three twenty-nine. So the, the plan is that hopefully we will get that amount, and then we would be able to repay the city that hundred and fifty, and then repay the downtown loan fund for the two hundred and one thousand. Uh, the developer's looking at doing a fifty-unit apartment complex. I think it's gonna be fifty units, it might be more. It just depends on how the site planning process, uh, goes. And, you know, that's a project that fits into our downtown plan. Next slide, Matt. What is gonna be required to really make the project work is a housing tax increment financing district, and that's something that we'll come back and discuss in the future. But really, it's, it's needed just to make the project, uh, economically feasible for the developer. They're planning on spending probably ten million dollars on this site to build this apartment complex, and it's just not gonna work from a financial perspective unless tax increment's part of that equation. But that's a decision for down the road. I just wanted to kind of get that on everybody's radar now, uh, so it doesn't come as a, as a surprise or anything in the future. For the city, the project has a number of advantages. I mean, number one, it lets us recover our investment in this site. It gets the lot redeveloped, which was our goal all along. Um, it adds housing for the city, and we need that, um, so that would be a gain. And then finally, it's, it's a project that's gonna add a lot of strength to the downtown because we're gonna get more people living, um, in and around the downtown area. So that's all part of the city's downtown plan, um, and something that we're, we're on a continuous process to try to accomplish. Next slide. Um, as we move forward here, hopefully, I'll be back in two weeks with a purchase agreement. We were, I thought we were there today, but then the developer called me up and asked a question, and now we gotta take a step back and look at this, but, um, in the purchase agreement, there'll be several provisions to protect the city. So one is gonna be a requirement that there is a development agreement that gets negotiated between the city and the developer. And then the development agreement would include these provisions that, number one, the site gets developed as a fifty, a par- fifty-unit apartment complex at a minimum, that construction begins within twenty-four months, that the developer must meet all city zoning requirements, they must follow city site and project approval processes, and then the buyer's responsible for all due diligence. And then also included in the purchase agreement, there would be a provision that says that subject to final approval by the city council, there would be a housing TIF district. Uh, the developer may terminate the agreement, and then also let the developer have a hundred and eighty days to do their due diligence. So they got six months to really review the site. Next slide. The one thing I wanna point out is that even though we're going into a purchase agreement, or hopefully going into a purchase agreement, the city council still retains final approval on, on pretty much all aspects. So at its sole discretion, the city council can, you can reject the zoning change that would be needed. You can, uh, decline to approve the development agreement, you can reject the site plan, you can say no to the housing TIF district, and you can refuse to pass the ordinance that's needed to sell the property. So even though we would hopefully be entering into a purchase agreement, we're not obligated to go all the way through. Um, again, it's really just to give the developer a little bit of security as they start spending money to really examine the site. Next slide. Um, you know, like I said before, the original plan was to seek approval for a purchase agreement, but we're gonna hold off on that, so there's no action tonight. Matt and I just thought it would be wise to just bring this before the council, just so that it's on, on the radar for you guys. So I think that's all I have to say. I'll be happy to answer any questions that, that the council may have.
I was curious, Miles, uh, where the number fifty units came from, and I only ask because I know there's stormwater management regulations there, so, you know, that even though it's a fairly large lot, you know, there's gonna be some stormwater requirements and...
Right, yep, that's exactly right. So, um, the, the number fifty, that was what the developer proposed, I think, just looking at the site. And that number may go up, it's really gonna be driven by how much of the site can be covered with an impervious surface compared to how much of the site needs to be dedicated for a stormwater retention pond. So the developer knows there's a pond that needs to come in, and most likely, I think, that's gonna show up to the east of the trees. So really, that's the constraint, is how much can you fit in there and still meet your, your requirements when it comes to covering the lot with an impervious surface.
Kind of along with that, I know, and that lot was being looked at as part of, uh, the Imagine Hutchinson Plan. You know, one thought was that to increase the amount of land that could be used for that stormwater calculation is perhaps that eastern tip could be included, you know, where the memorial is, but there'd be an easement of some kind. That, you know, um, we'd still be able to utilize that and maintain it and all that, but... So just wanted to throw that out if space comes an issue. I don't know what's below, you know, the, the map there, um, on the southwest side, if some of that could be included as well, if needed, so.
Yep, and I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause I think, you know, as we go through this process, we're gonna, it's gonna require a certain amount of creativity, uh, just to get us to where we wanna go.
And then the last thing is, I mentioned, asked you about this outside, but with the TIF, and it's talking about high-end market rate units, but I think with the TIF, uh, for housing TIF, you have to have a certain percentage that are subsidized. So just wanna put that out there, too.
Yes, yep, that's my understanding of it as well. And as we go through this process, we'll be working with the city's financial consultants. They help us out on these TIF projects, so they're really gonna kind of guide us through what's strictly required, 'cause as I understand it, I believe there's an affordable housing component that goes with that. And the, the tricky part is that, you know, if you ha- if you allocate a certain number of... the, the tricky part is that, you know, if you, if you allocate a certain number of apartments for affordable housing, that's going to affect the pro forma a little bit because they're going to get a little bit less rental revenue. But then hopefully that's made up through the tax increment. So it's kind of a balancing act and we'll see how, uh, what elders comes up with as we get further down through the process.
Uh, Mayor and Council, just to, to add to that, um, it's a twenty percent requirement that that the unit, at least twenty percent of the units would have to be income based. Um, that was a requirement that was put on with, um, the, the housing out by, uh, QuickTrip, the Highfield Apartments. And that's a part of the, the housing TIF, um, state statute, that requirement of, of twenty percent.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. And thanks, Miles. That's all.
Miles, is that a three story now?
Um, my understanding of it, I think it's going to, what, what at least has been talked about is that well, I should back up. The mayor asked if it would be a three story building and I would say more or less yes. Um, it would be, it would be, uh, garages, I think, on the ground level. And then there'd be another two stories of actual apartments above it. So I mean, by the time you add it all up, it's, it's probably a three story building. Any other questions about anything? Okay, I, I guess right now, um, hopefully I'll be back in two weeks with a purchase agreement and then we'll, we'll start taking the steps to hopefully make this project, uh, a reality. I'll say good night. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Miles. Uh, next is, uh, item is related to the CARES Act money, funding. Uh, Matt, uh, you want to do both those or just one at a time?
Yeah, we can do both of them and, uh, Finance Director Andy Reed will kind of introduce and bring the, the topic to the forefront for the city council.
All right, uh, rationale for the city's use of the CARE, CARES Act monies. And we have a resolution number one, five, two, two, three, authorizing the transfer of CARE Act monies to the HUC and the HRA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yeah, as you recall, back in July, we received a little over one million, seventy four thousand dollars from the state of Minnesota. Uh, these are called CARES Act funds and they originated from the federal monies. Um, that was approved, uh, back in March, I believe, in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So tonight I'm actually going to review three items within this agenda item. Um, the first one is our city plan and rationale for expanding the CARES Act funds. And then we'll also look at where we are to date with our CARES Act money spent and committed. And then finally we'll review that resolution seeking council approval to use some of our CARES Act monies to reimburse Hutch utilities and the Hutchinson HRA for eligible expenses that they've incurred. So first I just wanted to go through this, um, one page document I put together. That was actually a, a recommendation by the U.S. Treasury and the state of Minnesota. Um, to document our rationale for expending the CARES Act money. Uh, it's, there's a lot of requirements. We can't just spend it on anything, unfortunately. Um, but to, to qualify, uh, as an eligible expenditure for the CARES Act. The expenditure must be necessary in response to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. It must also not be included in our most recent city budget. And it must have been incurred during the covered period of March first, two thousand and twenty to November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. So it's ultimately the city's responsibility to determine the eligibility of our expenditures and to document the rationale for the use of these CARES Act monies. Um, so this one page document is basically doing that. And in April, when our auditors come in to audit our federal monies, I'll simply hand them uh, this plan along with all the supporting documentation behind our, our expenditures. And this will help tremendously as they're trying to determine whether our expenditures are legitimate or not. Cause there, there's a lot of gray areas. Unfortunately, still with, with this CARES Act monies and my understanding is as long as we've got the rationale and we've documented it properly and it meets those three criteria. We shouldn't have any problems when the auditors come knocking. So this one page summary of our rationale really includes four bullet points. The first is, is to cover costs incurred to protect our city employees and our customers and the public from the COVID nineteen virus. So this includes all our personal protection equipment. Our cleaning supplies, our contracted cleaning services. Modifications we've made to our service counters. Upgrades to our HVAC systems to improve our indoor air quality. And then any crowd control supplies or signage, uh, related to the pandemic. And then any other, really any other costs that we can incur in direct response to the COVID public health emergency. So that's the first category. The second category is technology costs in response to the pandemic. And this is to provide employees the ability to work from home remotely as necessary and also to provide uh, virtual meetings so we can still conduct our city business. So this will include some upgrades to the city council chamber, some of our conference rooms. Uh, also, uh, covers the cost of such services as Zoom and GoToMeeting. And then the costs for our laptops and some related accessories for those employees who may be working from home. The third category is for costs that are substantially different than the purpose that we actually budgeted for. And this is really our wages and benefits paid to city employees for any leave of absence related to the COVID pandemic. So when they had to stay at home during the state's shelter in place order. Uh, they used a certain leave that can qualify for CARES Act monies. Or if they had to stay home due to testing positive or having signs of COVID for either the employee, him or herself, or family members that would qualify. And then to stay home with their children, not being in school and the need to distance learn, that would also qualify for CARES Acts monies. And then the fourth category is our largest, and that's our small business assistance program. For those businesses that were financially impacted due to the COVID pandemic. Uh, I think about a month or so ago, council approved seven hundred and fifty thousand for forgivable loans to qualifying businesses. And that is being administered by the Hutchinson EDA. And then we also have some, uh, minor costs for the website to process those applications. And then some, some staff time, uh, the EDA has involved in administering the loan program. So those are all, uh, costs that we can basically cover with our CARES Acts monies. Um, so wanted to get it in one place. Uh, have you guys look at it? So you guys are fully aware of how we're spending these monies. And then give you the option here, uh, for any input or any questions, I guess, regarding what I put together for you tonight.
Thought it looked really good, Andy. So, um, touched different areas and so appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the next section, an update on our CARES Act funding. To date, we have dispersed five hundred and fifty two thousand dollars roughly. We have another four hundred and eighty two thousand committed to projects. Given us a total of about a million, thirty four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars either spent or committed. That leaves us with a balance of just under forty thousand that we need to spend by November fifteenth. And just to remind you, anything not spent by November fifteenth has to be transferred to the county and then they have a chance to use those monies. So we have a little under forty thousand to use. City staff put some, um, projects together that we could look at doing. Uh, otherwise if council has some ideas too, we can look at those. Uh, but the first project JJ Verhey looked at doing was putting touchless plumbing in all our various city facilities. That would be just a little over twenty one thousand and that would just be for equipment. So that would be putting in our touchless faucets, our touchless toilets and urinals and whatnot. Um, our second option is to install water bottle fillable stations in our city facilities. That would cost a little under thirteen thousand. And then one last project identified is to upgrade the break room in the city center to replace the current furniture that we have that's made out of fabric, replace that with vinyl surface for easier cleaning. And then to add table and chairs for more social distancing in that room as well. So those are three options we've identified that would likely expand the balance of our funds. So I'll open it up right now. If you guys have any questions, feedback or ideas on other, other projects you'd like to spend the monies.
Mayor and Council, I did put a, up on your screen, you should see kind of a summary of, of where that money's been spent. And, um, kind of what, what we've thrown out there as, uh, proposals to kind of fill out the remainder amount.
Could you remind me, are the paper towel dispensers, are those automatic? And if not, would that be something that could be added?
Yeah, I talked to JJ about that and we already have those installed. So that wouldn't be necessary. But yeah, that would, that would definitely have qualified.
I do like what you've put down there for the three items. You know, I think each one of those are good. Now, touchless plumbing, excellent. Now. Even the water bottle fillable, that's great too. And you know what? You need good furniture in that break room and it needs to be something that can be cleaned. So I think you've done a good job doing, putting this together. So thanks.
I think the three items identified look fine.
Okay, um, just to.
I'm sorry, Chad and Mary, is there any other, uh, you know, since you guys are with the EDA. Is there any other small businesses, you know, that are looking to get help yet or not?
Um, we haven't had a meeting for a little while now, obviously a couple of weeks, but, um, at the end of it, Miles and I think Mary Hodson has been doing, they've been doing a little legwork to try to spend all those funds. Um, but you know, that was three weeks ago that we had our last EDA meeting.
And I concur what Chad says now.
Andy, maybe you want to give an update on kind of where they're at with, uh, those EDA funds. I know there, I think there's still a slight amount left that they're trying to get dispersed.
Yeah, I think there's a little less than a hundred thousand left to disperse. So Miles wanted to kind of beat the streets and, and try to find some, um, businesses that have not applied yet and get them to apply. And then we also discussed as kind of a last ditch effort is if some of the businesses that did qualify for loans. If they actually had more expenditures and their loan received, we could look at uh, giving out a little more in loan amounts just to, to expend the monies and not, not have to forfeit those monies to the county. Um, so I know Miles is really looking at that with Mary through the end of October, trying to get rid of that money.
And I would just know, I was a part of a meeting with the, the county with, or at least some of the county staff, the county administrator. Their preference is that we don't give any money back to them because I think they're probably in the same position, uh, as we are with, you know, trying to disperse everything that they have and, you know, would rather not have more. And so I think that every ability that we can make to try to get that expensed here locally within, within the community or with even, within our organization is preferred for everybody.
I got Miles earlier this week and he said it was up to like six eighty nine, you know, that they had, uh, gotten approved.
Yeah, Chad, do you have some?
Yeah, if Miles can't get enough applications, you know, I think we could look, cause I'm sure all those loans weren't fully funded for what people applied for. You know, and at the end of the day, these businesses have to take the initiative to apply, you know, Miles shouldn't have to go door to door begging to give this money away. You know, so, um, obviously people that are really in need probably have already taken the initiative to do so.
But they can always weaken, the EDA as, can always increase that amount. Right? So they can give those dollars away. You know, some people wanted more money and we set a specific amount. You know, maybe it can be higher if they need it.
Well, if the funds are available, then well, you can go back to them and say that there is extra. So maybe they can apply for more.
Just wanted to say, I think we approved, you know, the plan when that was a fifteen thousand dollar limit. So I don't know if, if we want to go higher than that, that's fine. But I didn't know if has to come back to the council, Matt or Andy.
You know, I, I think, I think the average loan that was dispersed was twelve, right around twelve thousand, twelve five. And so my conversations with, with Miles, I think he feels, you know, we all know Miles, Miles is always optimistic, but I think he feels pretty confident that he can get the rest of that money dispersed. And I think kind of everything that we've touched on. Whether it's getting a couple more applicants or even if it's increasing some of those, those payment amounts, I think are all options that will be considered by the, by the EDA between now and in a month from now. And I don't know if we necessarily need to adjust that, that program. I suppose if if they find themselves in a bind, we still have a couple more meetings where that'd be a possibility.
All right, um, just one, one item to point out as well. And since we're under this timeframe of having to expend these monies by November fifteenth. There might be some other projects that we talk about at the facility committee for doing some, some other types of improvements uh, within some of our facilities. Think the cemetery office is actually one that we were looking at to, um, to put some safeguards in that office to protect the employee and the public as well. And maybe some security, uh, upgrades to that office. So there's some other things we're also looking at. Um, but utilizing other funds, uh, not necessarily these CARES Act monies.
Andy, that, that got me into thinking too, you know, in my conversations with the county administrator, she did note that, you know, if we get towards the end of our, our money here and we maybe have a couple of projects that could use a little bit more. Is just to kind of keep them in mind because they're still going to have that period of time between, you know, November fifteenth and I think it's December tenth. You know, depending on where they're at with, uh, expending all of their funds, that there is a possibility that they may have some that we could piggyback if we still got some projects that could potentially be done and we've, you know, quote unquote, ran out of our, of our funding. So.
Sure. That's good to know. Okay.
Can I just make a suggestion, you know, before we look at other options, um, if applicants and people that we did make awards to, um, just verify that we fully funded their requests first. Um, if there's people that didn't get fully funded for whatever reason, but had qualifying expenses and you know, I would think they should get first chances at it. And the council feels good about that.
I would agree with that, Steve. Uh, I've heard from business owners that their loans weren't fully funded. You know, up to the, and they weren't over that fifteen thousand dollar limit. So I think that would be the right thing to do.
I agree.
Anything else, Andy?
Um, I don't have anything else on this item. Uh, the resolution would be next. If anyone has anything else on here, any other questions? Okay. If not, we'll just move on to the resolution, number one, five, two, two, three. Asking the city council to approve the transfer of CARES Act funds to the Hutchinson Utilities Commission and the Hutchinson HRA. So just like, uh, the city itself incurring these expenditures. Hutch utilities and the HRA also incurred expenditures related to the COVID pandemic. Hutch utilities is looking to be reimbursed seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty nine dollars for personal protective equipment, cleaning supplies. And then they also want to do an HVAC ionization improvement within its facilities. And then the HRA is looking to be reimbursed five thousand, five hundred and fifty eight dollars for an HVAC ionization upgrade at its Park Towers facilities. So this resolution would be approving the transfers of those monies to those two entities. Similar to how we passed a resolution a while back to transfer those monies. Seven hundred and fifty thousand for the, uh, EDA to administer for the small business loans.
Reminder that these are two government entities and this is a valuable transfer. So.
With that being said, I would make the motion to approve that.
I'll second. I think it's great. We can help.
Motion by Dave, second by Steve to approve resolution number 15223. Roll call, Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mary, moving on.
Gary, we should have a formal motion from the council to approve the rationale for the city's use of CARES Act monies as well.
Yeah, thanks, man. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, for the rationale of city use of CARES Act money. The other discussion? Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on. DOT, Minnesota DOT Aeronautics Grant for Airport Pavement Maintenance. John?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm convinced that the Federal Aviation Administration and MINDOT Aeronautics are in the hoop manufacturing business. So here's one more to jump through. On August 11th, we had, we had made a request and the council approved request for the grant funds for two projects, pavement maintenance and then the taxi lane construction. And at that time, we also approved a work order with Bolden and Mink for the pavement maintenance portion of it. Where we're at in the process now is this is a request specifically for the pavement maintenance. We went out for quotes and got quotes from three vendors. The low price was from Farner Asphalt, who have done this type of work before for us. And based on what we verified in the field, the the amount of effort was going to be a fair bit less than what we had anticipated, primarily because the number of cracks are not as high as one would anticipate mathematically. So we did go out and physically verify and measure each of them and it came up significantly less than the first estimate. So that's a good thing. It means the pavement is holding together better than we expected. So this project would be built in spring of 2021, prior to the June 30th year end for the state. And we anticipate it to be probably about a two to three day operation at the most. There'll be some pavement marking removals, sealing, and then putting the pavement markings back down. So our local share ends up being 31,770, and we had anticipated $50,000 out of the infrastructure maintenance account for to cover that local share. So that resulted in significant amount savings there. So the tonight's action is a request approval of the grant request to MINDOT and then designating Mayor Forsier and City Administrator Yannick as the signatories or related documents. Be happy to answer any questions about the project.
We did just replace, resurfaced the runway, right, back in, what, 2015 or something?
Yes, 2015. We did do the first year that we could do anything for sealing. We did the apron and the taxi wave areas in 2018, and then this was our next opportunity to do it. So we're doing the, this will be the runway itself. We already did the extensions to the taxi taxi way already.
And then the other project that was part of the Boltman Mink, you know, in the FBA grant?
Right, right. The other piece of the puzzle was the ramp or taxi lane and connection between the Civil Air Patrol Building and our taxi lane. And some of that's going to be built on the on off of CAP's site. So in other words, linking from their site to our existing infrastructure. And what we'll do there is we'll work alongside the Civil Civil Air Patrol's contractor and engineer. They'll provide us the design and they will bill us for that work. We'll be able to to turn that bill in. And then we'll also bill Civil Air Patrol $18,000, which would be our our local share of the 60,000. That was approved. So that will be coming more than likely early spring, sometime in the winter, perhaps, we'll be able to get that, get that set of paperwork done similar to this.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? Roll call, Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Engineering Services Agreement for Wastewater Treatment Facility Headwork Improvement Final Design. Mr. Kent?
Thanks, Gary. Good evening, Council. Yeah, like the mayor mentioned, what we're here considering this evening is it is an engineering services agreement with Nero Engineering. We do have a representative, Eric Meester, here from Nero this evening. We also have Tim Bradkey, wastewater supervisor here also. Yeah, like we mentioned, I believe just at the last meeting, we touched on this this project, the improvements of the headworks, equipment and and infrastructure at the wastewater treatment facility. We believe this is a very serious need that's been somewhat ignored for quite some time. It's really shown itself to be a need, you know, as we've determined that the the accumulation of grit and sedimentation within our overall wastewater system, not only impacting our our old oxidation ditch system, but also our MBR system. So we believe this is well overdue. With that, that within your package is the engineering services contract with Nero. It's an amount of approximately $297,000. And yeah, with that, if you have any specific questions relative to the agreement, like I said, Eric Meester is here this evening. He could possibly step up, introduce himself and just share a little bit about how the the fee approach for this final design effort was arrived at. And like I said, also, Tim is here this evening, too.
Thanks, Ken. Thanks, Council. Earlier this summer, our team did a preliminary design on this project. And we had worked with Kent and Tim to kind of break the the design into two phases. The first phase was preliminary engineering phase to identify the the extent of the improvements out there and to help further identify the costs associated with those improvements. It also helped further refine the the engineering effort that would be required for the final design. So that's kind of how we decided to take our approach with this. I think in the end, relative to the estimated project size, our design fees are a little over 7% of the project, which we feel saved probably about 50 to 75,000 on the engineering fees, based on how we had originally estimated it. So we sure feel that this approach by kind of breaking it up into doing this preliminary engineering and before we moved into scoping out the final design, was a very good, cost-effective approach to, you know, get this project to the to the finish line. Any questions?
Can I ask something on the project, a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
You know, I get where, you know, there's definitely a benefit to do the screening and grit removal ahead of the separation basin or splitting thing. Just wondering, you know, it seems like everything's kind of fine, screening, fine grit removal. Is there a need to have something like a two-stage course and then followed up by fine? Just to know how things get, if there's a danger of things getting plugged up and?
Yeah, so a little bit about this, it's a good process question, Steve. So with the the two pump stations that feed the wastewater plant hats and the main lift station, both of those now have grinders in them, and those grinders are used to protect the plugging of the of the pumps that send everything to the wastewater plant. So the grinders have already, as part of their process of protection of the equipment, ground everything up to a finer system. And so instead of having a core system ahead of it, we we don't really, every, most everything that would go through the grinders would go right through a coarse screening system. So with kind of by the inclusion of the grinders, we've excluded the need for a coarse screen, which is why we go right from the pump stations into fine screening.
Okay.
And maybe add to that, Steve, too, that on the relative to the grit, the the plant has had a coarse grit removal system that has been very ineffective. And that's just the kind of the makeup of the sewer system as it sits today. For Hutchinson, most of the grit that's coming into the system are siles and sands. That's why it's become ineffective. So that's part of this, probably the core part of this improvement is to add that fine grit removal process to take those fines out of the system as opposed to sending them into the downstream processes.
Is that unusual to have that amount come in? You know, if you think a sanitary sewer versus stormwater sewer? Just curious.
Yeah, it probably was 30, 40, 50 years ago, Steve, but most of, you know, the aging infrastructure, buried infrastructure, most of the intrusion is now coming through damaged pipes and tree roots, as opposed to how maybe it was 30, 40, 50 years ago, where it was more infill inflow coming from, you know, gravel and rocks and other things from the surface. Now it's all subsurface stuff that's coming in through smaller crevices and voids in the system. That's, this is, this is happening all over, particularly Minnesota, because we have such an aging infrastructure that's primarily associated with damaged pipes and tree root intrusion that's only allowing the set siles and sands into the system.
So in other words, maybe we have to look at some piping issues down the road, too, when there's opportunities.
That's, that is true. And I think, you know, I think you're well aware, at least Tim and Kent are, the amount of I and I that it can be contributed to the system, right? This is another reason, part of it, right, is you've got these these voids and gaps in your system, this aging infrastructure. So would be money well spent in doing suitable improvements to, you know, your collection system, no doubt about it.
Last question, and, you know, I talked about the grit removal, and currently we use this vortex system that's not really working that well. So there must be some other method to do it. You don't have to explain it, but?
Yep. It's it's similar. Actually, it's it's still kind of a vortex system, but instead of it being in a big, like it is now, a big tank with a kind of a panel wheel, they do it in a vortex in trays. So, you know, the wastewater comes into a series of four or five trays that help separate the different velocities that go through that, through that vortex system. And so you don't have a consistent velocity profile in one tank. You've got a variable velocity profile in that vortex in one tank. So similar concept, it's just much more refined today than it was, you know, has been done for the last, you know, 50, 70 years with the the traditional vortex system.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Mayor Forsier asked that I maybe touch upon one of Eric's responses with respect to I and I, and that's inflow and infiltration into pipes, like Eric mentioned, structures, manholes, per se. Yeah, there's a definite need there. Fortunately, Hutchinson doesn't have a big an issue on that front as a lot of other communities do, with even, you know, a lot of pipes that are a lot older than ours, you know, you look towards the metro area, you know, there's a lot of systems that have been in the ground a long time. But we did do a study headed up by John Olson and Tim Bradkey a couple of years ago. I probably almost three, four years ago now, time flies, but I believe we brought that to council and reported on it at that point in time. And we've zeroed in on areas. We actually did some work this summer, monitoring some flows and and taking a good look at structures, manhole structures on our sanitary sewer system in a specific area in the community that was identified by that study as having more I and I than than other areas. So we're doing our due diligence on that front, albeit, you know, sealing up a manhole, sealing up a length of pipe comes at a fairly significant cost. So it's, obviously, the cost is cheaper than, you know, taking those structures out of the ground and putting new ones in. But what do we pay a manhole, Jen? And we just did a few here, 3 to 5,000. Yeah, depending on the height of the manhole, you know, the seal up a manhole's 3 to 5,000. So, you know, let's start that up in a hurry. And yeah, I think pipe is, oh, probably 20 bucks a foot, yeah, give or take on an eight inch man. So, yeah, just wanted to touch upon that. I don't know if there's any questions from council at this point. Otherwise, just want to mention, schedule wise, project delivery, like I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we're looking to keep this moving as quickly as possible with the hope to be bidding this probably early spring timeframe at at this point. So probably, you know, early spring, late winter for that matter, so February, March timeframe to set us up for a getting hopefully a good bid price in the the contractor world and then look to deliver project. We did talk about funding at the most recent Resource Allocation Committee meeting. We hadn't had a meeting for many months. We had a a meeting just last week. Andy Reed is looking at some funding alternatives, specifically bonding opportunities in this financial environment. So we're hoping to get the design effort underway, which will start the final design, which will start this evening. If this proposal is approved, and then we'll we'll look to actually then scope the project relatively quickly, start to get some estimated costs, you know, in the next few months. We're also going to be looking at other potential project opportunities on the water and wastewater fronts to possibly capitalize on a larger bond issue. So we'll be working with with Andy and Matt to decide that. And yeah, it seems to be like, like Eric mentioned, that, you know, things seem to be aligning on this front. We are very comfortable with the project approach. You know, the initial scope somewhat grew on us. We, in the CIP, if you're familiar with that document, we had thought this might be delivered in more of a staged manner over multiple years. At this point, we're confident that, you know, basically taking it on with one project. At this point, we're confident that, you know, basically taking it on with one project letting, in essence, is the right approach. And thus, we're, we're talking about the funding with Andy because it's a more substantial investment on the front end. So with that, I would recommend approving the engineering services agreement.
I'd like a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? Not real call. Gary. Dave.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi, and on that, Dave seconded it, not Mary.
Okay.
Thank you, Chad.
And I, motion carries. Setting special meeting for, to canvass the election results.
Yes, Mayor and Council, obviously we have the upcoming general election for early November. In years past, the canvassing was generally, I think, you know, three to four, two to three days after the general election with changes that have gone on, they pushed that back. And so now I think we have until the thirteenth of November to, to canvass. Staff is recommending that the council consider canvassing at noon on Thursday, November twelfth. That would be right after the, the county canvases their election results at, I think, ten o'clock that morning.
I'll make a motion that we set that for Thursday, November twelfth at noon. Or Chad, you got it?
Yeah, I had a question. Is there a reason that it has, that staff is recommending at noon?
I think the only reason, and Melissa's there, she wants to jump on camera, I think the only reason is just because it's right after when the, the county canvases their election. So just to kind of get it done.
Okay, I, I should be able to make it. I'll just have to make sure I can get off work.
Could be later, though, right?
Yeah, it could be later, it could be even Friday as well, so...
I know, I, I do a ten to one in Glencoe, yeah, ten. So I don't know, Chad, if you want to do it later or even Friday, I don't, I don't know, what else?
Does anybody care if we do it on Friday at nine?
I'm good with that.
Works for me.
Dave.
That's acceptable.
Melissa? Melissa's shaking her head, yes, so we'll, we'll schedule it nine o'clock Friday.
Well, I'll have to redo my motion, right? I will make a motion that we meet on Friday, the thirteenth, at nine o'clock to canvass.
That's why Chad wanted it done Friday.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Depends how everything goes, I suppose. And I will second it and thank everybody for their flexibility. My full-time job gets in the way.
All righty, we're going to canvas on Friday, the thirteenth, at ten, or at nine o'clock, I'm sorry. Dave.
Just a question, is that here at the city center?
Correct.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Twelve point five parking lot sale, ma'am?
I think Chief Gifferson will, is in attendance to introduce this agenda item that we asked for the council to consider tonight. And I think you all should have received a copy of kind of the request as you came into the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Apologize for my red face, that mask has a tendency to do that. So I was approached late last week by Common Cup Ministries who are holding their annual winter coat distribution on October twenty-seventh. And they're requesting that parking lot, or municipal lot B be closed for that event so the, the individuals can stage in their vehicles. Their plan is then to call a number and then they would be able to come in and choose a jacket, or a family could come in and choose multiple jackets during that time. Then they would leave. And again, the intent is to comply with the executive order and to accomplish social distancing and then all the other protocols would be followed as well. So our plan would be to close the lot at six AM on that day, just to prevent people from parking there right away in the morning and then us having to find out who's parked there and have them move their vehicle, that type of thing. We'll remove the barricades and open the lot immediately after the event is complete. And I recommend that you approve it.
Dave, where's the parking lot at?
Municipal lot B is the lot, I guess we call it, the Citizens Bank Lot, but it's adjacent to Franklin between Second Avenue South and First Avenue South.
Motion to approve. I'll second it. Motion by Steve, second by myself, to approve the lot closure.
One question with, maybe for the chief, but I don't know how much the school district might utilize that and so would there be some advance warning to whoever?
Great question. Common Cup Ministries is going to talk to both Citizens Bank and also Park Elementary to advise them that the lot will be closed.
Perfect, thanks. Any other discussion?
Yes, there is. That's Thanksgiving weekend, so there won't be any school. Not?
It's October, October twenty-seventh.
Pardon me for misreading that, thank you.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, Dave, roll call.
Hi.
Mary.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Minutes, reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have the EDA Authority Board minutes from August twenty-six, two thousand twenty, Touch Utilities Commission meeting minutes, July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, Hutchinson Utility Commission Special Meeting Minutes from August sixth, two thousand twenty, Call Grass Enforcement Report for August and September of two thousand twenty, the Hutchinson Liquor Store Quarterly Report. We have John Olson here and I have a question for him, or actually, I'd like him to explain for us that aren't old farm kids about windrowing their leaves and how wide they should be and how not to put them on the corners.
Well, thank you, Mayor Porcer. Two thousand twenty has just been a different year altogether and even in the leaf department, it's, it's different. We had a pretty heavy rain this past weekend combined with some very high winds and then another, you know, a couple windy days and we're actually picking up probably a normal second week, starting already, the, the operators were out there for the first time today. And we're seeing numbers and, and loads and things that we normally see in weeks two or three. What Gary was talking about is, is the how to place the leaves. A long, skinny, tall row is the best to try to keep that anywhere from about two to three feet wide is preferable. Then that's able to be handled pretty easily by the vacuum. So two to three feet wide, as high as it needs to be right along the edge of the curb. And then the mentioning of the corners is the, the vacuum hose on the machine is in the front third of the machine and, and what happens as you turn a corner, you won't pick those leaves up in the corner. So we do ask folks to, to push the leaves back away from the edges of the, on the corner by about ten to fifteen feet and then that way the vacuum will have time to get squared away and start picking leaves up again. So I know everybody's working on the big piles already, so just have, have patience with us, we'll get there. And today went off without a hitch. We got through the, the route and the guys were back putting the vehicles and equipment away about twenty after four. So tomorrow's going to be a push to get to the end of the day on time, but we'll do our very best. Any other questions about the program?
Hey, John, will you reiterate how important it is not to put them all on the street instead of, you know, put them on the street the day that they're picking them up? You know, what happens is the people who put them on the street before, we had, we've had such winds, they've all blown over to the other side of the street now. And now those piles are much higher than three feet wide.
Right, exactly. So what, what Mary's talking about is, is the recommendation we have is as you work through the week to move the leaves to the edge of, edge of the grass, leave them on the grass, and then the night that your garbage is picked up, then, then put them out onto the street then. That way, there's less of the stuff blowing around than there is, it doesn't get into the middle of the road. And obviously it can cause some slippery situations for bicyclists and others. So we just ask that you keep, keep them on the yard until the night that your garbage is picked up, then we'll be by that point.
And the one other thing, it's been, it rained, so any of them that were on the street are now all covering up the drains at the end of your street.
Correct, yeah.
Adaptive rain.
Yeah, leaving them in the gutter line will cause that to get carried down and has a very good potential of plugging catch basins and drains.
Thanks, John.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thanks, John, good explanation. Ken, do you have any questions tonight?
Mayor and Council, yes, thanks. Just like a moment for a couple of items, some things that happened to us last week, mid, midweek last week, shortly into the workday, we experienced a power outage at the plant, very unexpected. I guess the utilities lost a transformer in the area. What was rare to that instance is, I haven't had a chance to talk to officials over there yet, why this happened, but normally within fifteen seconds, we're on alternative power and that did not happen for several minutes. Also, what was different is it also affected both of our main lift stations. So kind of an all-hands-on-deck type of situation, very panicky for somebody in charge and anybody who works there when all your equipment goes dead in the water. I just want to say thanks to such a great staff. In those instances, you make a call out and everybody jumps into action, often going to different parts of the city as well as different parts of the plant to try to get things started up as soon as we regain power. It's pretty hard on some of the equipment, too, when you, when you go from a dead run to dead stop and some of those equipment are pretty finicky when we try to restart them. So there's a lot of expertise out there. None of us are electricians or instrumentation people or PLC programmers and we work through a lot of things out there to get that plant and, and those apparatuses all started back up again. So, so it's not surprisingly that we just recently learned, kind of very late in the season, that for two thousand nineteen, again, the MPCA awarded us an operational excellence award for that year. So that makes four years out of the last five. And the season ended back in September, so I don't see any reason why two thousand twenty won't bring the same. So I just want to say how proud I am of the staff out there. With that, another thing that happened, Steve, did you have something?
Yeah, as far as the power outage, I remember when the plant was upgraded, that there was talk about having an emergency generator, but that was not put in because it felt that HUC had the capability for dual service or whatever. But do you see a need for that or is this just one of those situations?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've worked through those issues and that was, you know, when I came on board, it was like, why don't we have emergency generation at the plant? And that was all explained to me, that there's dual power feeds from, one from each plant. The likelihood that, you know, both power feeds would go off for a substantial amount of time would be like a natural disaster of a tornado coming through town and then we have bigger problems also. But we, the transfer of power used to happen instantaneously prior to the solar field going in. The first time we had a, a transfer of power with that solar field, there was some instance where there was a back feeding power. So they've since put in a delay of how fast that power transfers. It's usually, like I said, ten to fifteen seconds now, which gives the, the solar field time to trip offline and not be backfed. For whatever reason, like I said, I have to still get with personnel over there at the commission just to see what was different in this instance. And also that it took out the main lift station also. And, and like I said, those, those are all fed by different feeders and so we were just kicked offline, all three, or both main lift stations and the plants. Not sure why that happened. The other thing I wanted to point out is we had some operators that go around and clean up the remote lift stations, some of the floats and the trans boosters that give us level readings that hang down in there, they have cords and, and hair and some other unmentionables usually gets ratted up on them. So in order to keep them functioning properly, they have to go in there, lift those cords up and, and tug on the stuff to get it off of the cords. One station in particular, my guys are always wearing protective equipment, but they, they see a influx of sharps and needles and, and other dangerous objects. Those things for sure should not be flushed down the toilet, disposed of properly in shark's containers, hopefully inside your home. And then once that container's full, you can take them to a disposal site for proper disposal. On that same note, along the same lines, just want to put up the thing that, a notice that is an issue, ongoing issue with the MPCA is pharmaceuticals getting flushed. There are proper ways to dispose of those, too, and I believe one is taking them to the, to the police station. Any outdated drugs or anything that has been past its prescribed dates and stuff should be not flushed down the drain or the toilet, but indeed disposed of properly. So just wanted to take a moment to kind of make those PSA announcements. Appreciate it.
I missed the scene, our valve on display this summer. I thought of that a couple of weeks ago, so maybe next summer.
Yeah, we're working on it. I've been looking at trying to get a, a little trailer that I can have multi-use, maybe get a lawnmower on it for the traveling route, too, if we need to take it to lift stations. But I want to build a, a box that I can house them in and have... need to take it to lift stations. But I want to build a box that I can house them in and have acrylic or something, maybe somebody in the room can help me with that. But, so that we can keep them safe from the public, but also have proper viewing. But so, we definitely will work on that because, yeah, public outreach and that communication, I'm all over that, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Sam. Keep your person, don't kick your head. I see that. Come up and tell us about the trailer, and maybe you can touch on, help clear them out with the sharps and the drug disposal.
So, trailer, the, the speed trailer?
Yeah.
Okay. As you all are aware, we acquired a speed trailer in the last month or so. We've had the opportunity to deploy it, more just kind of learn how, how it functions. It was placed on School Road by West Elementary for about two weeks. We haven't, we're still learning how to interpret the data. But I think like an average hour during an average day is 200 to 250 vehicles pass that site. The, I think the highest speed that was recorded was 68 miles per hour. We're gonna make the assumption that that was an emergency vehicle operating under, in an emergency, but again, we have no way of knowing that for, for sure. But the majority of vehicles going through that area are obeying the speed limit or within certain parameters that certainly aren't alarming to us. But again, hopefully the 68 miles per hour was an emergency vehicle, or not somebody trying to find out how fast their car will go on School Road. Incidentally, that, that, the monitor on that does shut off at a certain speed, so even if that was the case, that individual would have been able to see what their recorded speed was. But we will be getting the trailer out. We have been receiving some traffic service requests in some residential areas, and we'll be getting that out in those areas here in the next couple weeks, for snow flies. Oh, and then as far as the sharps are concerned, sharps, when people bring them in, so we have a program at the police station that's sponsored by the McLeod County Sheriff's Office called Take It To The Box. And so what that is for is for people to discard their no longer needed prescriptions, either they're expired, or a loved one has passed away, and they need to empty out the medicine cabinet, that type of thing. There is a little bit of confusion that people think that that's a great place to get rid of sharps or syringes, that type of thing, and that is not the purpose of that. What we recommend people do is just take an old laundry detergent bottle and dispose of them in there. It is appropriate, once they're in that, to discard those in the trash when they go, just go to the landfill. But there are certain disposal sites that you can use as well. I'm not familiar with where those would be, but our recommendation is make sure they're in a plat, hard plastic bottle, sealed, and then you can discard them in the trash. But as far as the Take It To The Box program is concerned, that has been a very successful program. So I'm hoping that we're not seeing a lot of prescription medication being flushed in Hutchinson, because they certainly have the opportunity to discard it at the police department. And I would say probably for the county of McLeod, probably 75% of the pharmaceuticals that go into that program come out of the box that's in our lobby. So it's very, it's been a very well-received program, I guess, over the last several years. Any questions on that?
I ask one, one other thing, Chief.
Yeah, sure.
About with the parking lot, it dawned on me, isn't there some overnight parking on the north end of that? And I didn't know how those people would be notified, or that would be handled, but.
Yeah, so, my thought is on, on the overnight parking, we're not gonna bother with that. I mean, if they're parked there, that's fine. Again, 6:00 AM, we're not gonna be towing vehicles out of a lot or anything like that, if people are parked there.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Chief, Ken?
Yes, I'll get into a few project updates shortly, but first and foremost, Patrice Vanderbein retired. Her last day was actually yesterday, so kind of a sad day yesterday on the engineering department front and the public works as a whole. Pat was, is a very dedicated, detailed, hardworking person that was with the city since 1977, believe it or not, so just over 43 years. So, yeah, we wish Pat the, Pat the best. Yeah, we had a good evening out with her last night, a few of us, and yeah, kind of a sad day, we do believe. We have a good person that, that gives us a fighting chance to help fill her shoes. Jocelyn Jacobson, who actually worked in the DMV for all about six years since 2014, will be filling that position. So, congrats to Pat. Main Street, Highway 15. Yeah, few details, signs and the likes, a little bit of programming on the signal system is being cleaned up as we speak, some punch list items. Yeah, I probably shouldn't say this, but TV, but the hope is next Monday. So, but you never know when the signs might get pulled at this point, you know, that the contractor might surprise us with a, with a soft opening. So, but what we're hearing is next Monday, the 19th. And if there's anything else on the Main Street front?
Just saw a big, some heavy equipment on Washington Avenue yesterday.
Yeah, I was heading that direction next. Yeah, that is actually, what we believe has, has nothing to do with the Main Street project at this point in time. I think it's just an unfortunate coincidence. There is a sanitary sewer service that's been in the ground for all about 70 or so years on the northwest corner of Washington and Main. And that had to be dug up yesterday, and we discovered the pipe was somewhat compromised. Yeah, it might not have been the best install from the beginning. So, we'll be working with the property owner to resolve that situation. But like I said earlier, we don't believe at this point that it had anything to do with the project. The construct, it was 30, 40 feet beyond the construction limits, the patch for that matter, on the side street there, Washington. And like I said, it was a sanitary sewer service, which is, you know, anywhere from eight, nine, 10 feet in, in the ground typically. And, you know, there was compaction equipment, you know, in the area throughout the summer, no doubt. But on the other hand, we, we build a lot of street projects over existing old service pipes, clay pipes, that we're not replacing on the city's front and with the similar compaction methods. So, yeah, I think it's just unfortunate coincidence. VFW alley over here finally is completed. Looks very nice over there. Very happy with the, the job the project, or the project contractor did, and we're actually able to clean up some of the, the grades between the, the alley and the, and the VFW building on the, on the south end of that alley. So it worked out very well. We tweaked a few things there, add a little bit of concrete, and then that warped the, the tuminus a little bit, the blacktop, to make the, the water run where it should up in that area. And otherwise, yeah, south central drainage area down to the east of the rec center. Yeah, with the weather here the last couple of weeks, since the contractor got started, yeah, been going very well. Lot of large pipe, lot of large storm sewer manhole structures going in, in the, the ground. And, yeah, they're doing just fine right now. They, they have pieced together the disturbance area within the rec parking lot, rec center parking lot. So that's been capped with the bitcon material from Creekside. Talking to John Olson, and then working with Mark Haugen at the, at the rec center. Obviously, Election Day is approaching on that front down there. What we plan on doing is doing some temporary striping, painting to act, to try to delineate as best we can where people should be parking. So, you know, obviously, the space there can be fully utilized as much as possible, like it would, should be when it's blacktop and striped. So, we'll be doing that. There's probably three to four weeks of, of work there that remains, so hopefully the weather cooperates the next few weeks. And then lastly, Highway 7, Montana Street, our hot crossing system, still working with MINDOT to get that through the review process. It's, yeah, it's been interesting, but hopefully we're, we're almost there. And good news on that front, we did receive an additional $100,000 in funding. I believe I probably mentioned this during the, the public hearing we had on this, I think back in July. You know, our, our original funding allocation from MINDOT was $200,000, $160,000 federal aid allotment, and then the $40,000 match, which would typically be the city's, MINDOT picked up with their own district trunk highway funds. So they had, in essence, dedicated $200,000 to the project, based on an estimate from some time ago. Like everything else in the construction industry and on other fronts, you know, prices have gone up, especially on the signal pole and mast arm front and, and other material costs, you know, over the last year or so. Thus, we, we received an updated estimate from the, the design consultant to the tune of about $280,000 a few months ago. And just recently, you know, MINDOT, well, we obviously informed MINDOT of that, and just recently, they informed us that they are dedicating another $100,000 to the project. So, we're up to $300,000 in total, with none of it being city funds at this point. So it's still a combination of federal aid dollars and trunk highway dollars. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Kent?
Yep.
I was just going to mention to you and everybody, but as far as the bonding bill at the state, the lake restoration project is in both the Senate and House bill for $3.1 million, so.
I, yeah, I, I got me a coalition's email. Was that noted in there today? I didn't have a chance to open it up by the time I noticed.
Yeah, yeah, I did open it, the House one, and then looked at the Senate side and found that, and it's the same dollar amount, and, and then found both, the project is in both, so.
Well, it's great news, yeah. Obviously, I wasn't aware, but that's, yeah, a new, new, I guess.
Another project to work on.
You know, so, yeah, I'm sure, obviously, thankful, yeah, thanks to our local legislators. I'm sure Representative Birdall is probably heavily involved in, in that, that occurring at this 11th hour. Thank you.
Was it three point, was it 3.1 million?
Yes.
Yeah.
It asked for what, four, 4.5?
Thanks, Ken. Mr. Sabora, you have nothing today. All right, Dave?
Oh, it's quiet on the western front.
I think you're to the east of me, so you're eastern front tonight. Mary, how about you?
I have nothing.
All right, Steve?
Just one other question, is, you know, any new news on the rec center roof? It's just kind of odd that we're hanging up on that, which the whole project was really about getting that done.
Yeah, I don't have anything new outside of a couple weeks ago. Apparently, there was some dispute on the material costs and the contractor, more or less trying to say that it was gonna cost the city more, and we explained to them, that's not how bidding works. And, and so my understanding was that they, that's all been resolved, and I'm not sure, you know, it's a follow-up we'll have to make. I'm, you know, from my understanding, they were supposed to start on that, and I, I guess I'm not sure why they haven't yet. So, I think everything else is complete on that regarding, you know, the inside work and the exterior work, and it's just laying that, that final rough, so.
Our parts board meeting a couple of weeks ago, we were having a supply chain issue with the roofing as well.
Okay. Yeah, and, and you're right, Chad, I forgot that was one other thing that was noted too, that I think they finally got all that resolved, and then they're having issues with getting the material, so.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's it, thanks.
Mary, Chad, do you have anything else?
No.
All righty, Matt?
I actually don't have anything else tonight either.
Oh my God. I think I just felt the world jerk there a little bit, but that's all right. I have nothing else, so let's adjourn and go home.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second that.
Motion by Dave, second by Steve, to adjourn. Roll call, Dave?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.